Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 12th, and the time is 6:40 PM, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up on our agenda is the consent agenda. First item is the minutes from February 27th. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Great. If there are no questions or comments, I'll take the motion. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from February 27th, 2024. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next is warrants 46, 54, and 55, which we've sent around for signatures. Any questions or comments on any of those? All right, hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 46, 54, and 55.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Do we have any visitors?
We do. So I think I'd like to request to potentially suspend some of the rules around the visitors' comments. The GEA, as I shared with you all last week, had some questions and I think comments that they'd like to share regarding the 24, 25 calendar vote. So if you would all entertain that, I think the GEA Executive Board would like to speak.
Can I have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to suspend the rules to allow them to speak now.
Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's gonna come forward?
Multiple candidates.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kristin Nagliari. I'm the secretary of the Granby Educators Association.
And I'm Michelle Tisdale. I'm the vice president of the GEA.
Okay. Sorry.
Just to clarify, on January 23rd, during our bimonthly superintendent meeting, Stephen shared with the board two different draft calendars. We discussed them and then agreed to present them to the membership, which includes administrative assistants, paraprofessionals, and teachers. Membership had serious thought and consideration into both calendars and what they thought would be in the best interest of the students. After watching the video of the discussion about the calendar, membership brought it to the board's attention that the school committee had questions and concerns regarding the final membership vote.
Ms. Bartosz, when you brought up changes being made to either of the calendars, the membership had the same questions regarding a few of those dates that we currently have no school, such as the Friday before Labor Day, the full day before Thanksgiving, and Good Friday. Through conversations with some of our members, it was brought to the board's attention that it had been, that if they had been asked, that membership would have been agreeable to voting on some of the changes to these days off, such as the Friday before Labor Day, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and Good Friday. Those changes could have potentially opened up three additional days so that the calendar could have been more flexible. The membership feels that it was unfortunate that it wasn't tabled for further discussion prior to the vote. It was stated during the meeting that it had to be voted on that evening. Was there a reason behind having to vote that night?
Why don't you finish, and we'll come back? Unless, do we want to have discussion going through?
I think maybe finish the whole statement, and we'll answer all the questions.
Okay, sure. All right, you want us to go through the whole two pages?
Yep, and then we'll come back.
Okay, sure, okay. Membership also understands that any potential snow days would have affected the calendar by adding additional days to the back end of the year, and membership was also informed and reminded about the Juneteenth that could potentially affect the end of the school year. Oh, it's me again. Okay, it's me again. Ms. Pelletier, you had mentioned the concern with teachers having to return earlier than the first day of PD to set up their classrooms, and you had mentioned it being about a week, which is a valid point because setting up our classrooms in elementary school especially starts about August 1st. Once PD starts, there's no time for the classrooms to be set up. We are given at most an hour to work on our own during our PDs, and that time's usually spent collaborating with our coworkers and discussing students and curriculum. So our two days for PD are scheduled by the district, and they're taken up with mandatory professional development meetings, et cetera. It's me again. I have a lot to say. Sorry about that. There's a lot of K.
She's the one that divvied out the initials, by the way. I didn't do this, she did it.
Yes, I did. All right. Mr. Durham had mentioned that in the best interests of the students and continuity with their learning, the four consecutive days to start would be more beneficial rather than just two days. It's important to note that the students, especially at the elementary school level, have a much easier adjustment back to full days of school after summer break if they return gradually. That time, it allows the classrooms to establish their routines, as well as for the teacher to build a classroom climate for a successful school year. It's me again. Sorry. I was gonna keep going. Mr. Dern also mentioned his perception that the later start date was teachers trying to extend their summer vacation. That was never a consideration of our membership since we are required to work the same amount of days a year as determined by the DUCI. As well, any days off from school, be it holidays, snow days, et cetera, are unpaid days for staff, whether they're a teacher, a para, or an administrative assistant. We are only paid for 183 days that we are contracted to work. It's also important to know that many of our paras, administrative assistants, and even some of our teachers hold two and three jobs when we are not required to be here at school.
Prior to the vote, Ms. Bartosz made a comment expressing that she had lots of thoughts, none of which are appropriate to be speaking right now. The membership is genuinely curious about the context of that statement and would appreciate any clarification that you could provide.
In the future, is the school committee amendable to the board and/or its membership being brought into the conversation to discuss any questions that you may need clarified before your final vote on the following year's calendar?
We do have some members here tonight, excuse me, and we also have several responses regarding questions the school committee discussed in the last meeting. The membership does understand that it will not affect this year's vote, but the board would like to share with you their anonymous responses so you have some insight into their reasoning.
I'm not finished yet.
Sure. We appreciate that you took the time to have a thoughtful conversation regarding the school calendar at your last meeting, as well as your time this evening. The GEA and its membership hope that we can continue to have a collaborative relationship going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I don't remember saying that we had to vote, but we had had it on about three, two or three agendas, so we were trying to just finalize it because we did feel like we were a little bit later getting the calendar out than we had been in the past. So we wanted to try to get that, so I don't, I truly don't remember the context. I would have to go back and watch. For one of your other comments talking about collaboration, we've invited a, and asked for a GEA representative to come and be a part of those meetings, and that's what I had always intended and what I had known since being on the school committee. Previously, Robin LaMortar would come for several meetings. Cheryl, Danette did come for several meetings and then stopped coming, but she had said that she didn't feel necessarily comfortable unless there was something particular.
Is that how you remember it?
Yep. So, but that was what our envision was. So the agendas are posted, you're listed on almost every agenda as a GEA representative, so we would love to have representation come and be a part of that. We used to vote to allow Robin to speak quite often, and she would bring forth concerns as the representative attending the school committee meetings, and that's what I've envisioned, so we'd love to have you or somebody come.
May I reply to that, please?
Of course.
Okay, so yes, Robin did do that. At that time, there was less collaboration with the superintendent. Now, we meet biweekly with Stephen, and we're able to take care of many things behind the scenes, so some of those things don't necessarily need to be brought forth in this kind of a setting. The other thing is too, is that there were many times, even when I was president, that the school committee doesn't have questions or have anything on their agenda that would require information from the perspective of the teachers, the paras, or the administrative assistants. So it does make for an extremely long day. So like, I've been here since seven, and you know, and then going home, it's another 45 minutes. So we try to take turns because at one time it was always Cheryl, but it can't always be that way. But if we knew ahead of time, like even a week ahead of time, that there was something in particular that you felt you might need feedback on, we'd be happy to be here.
And I, I'm not trying to be flip or difficult, but the agendas are posted, so if there's something that you feel, that you see that's on there that would need input, then you're welcome, welcome to come. Because I, we don't always know how the conversations are going to go.
Right.
So it's, you know, I don't know how to answer that necessarily, but the agendas are posted 48 hours in advance if you have questions on the agenda, but if there's something in particular, you know, we've had, Stephen has reached out, you know, we've done that, but we're gonna be in a different situation. We're gonna have a new superintendent going forward.
Right.
At some point.
Yep.
And so we're gonna have, the relationship is going to be different, right?
Correct.
We're gonna have somebody that's new to the district coming in, so we are going to have to come forward a lot, a lot more. We're not gonna be able to sit idly by necessarily and wait for, you know, we're gonna have to do that collaboration ourselves.
I agree with you. So when we are in that situation, we will definitely, you know, look at that a little bit differently because we're all gonna be learning somebody new.
Absolutely.
Yes, I thank you.
And for the one where I had a lot of thoughts that weren't appropriate, it was just really rapid-fire questions for the, for our committee, like, why do we always seem to get ourselves tangled up into these things? You know, maybe the calendar is the school committee purview. Are we doing ourselves a disservice because we're never gonna be able to make everybody happy? The membership vote was 46 to 40. It's not even, I don't think, fully representative of the entire membership. So, you know, we're putting ourselves out. We spent almost 40 minutes discussing that, and we ended up really, it wasn't even a unanimous vote, right? So there was still, we could have probably talked for another three hours and still had people unhappy with us. So that's just my frustration level. Like, I could sit here and just expound on that, but it's not really appropriate. It's a waste of time.
Gotcha.
Right? Because at some point, we need to make a decision, and we have to be comfortable with that, and we did, I think I even said on that, we don't have to be unanimous in this vote, but we have to make it, have to make a vote. So I, you know, I don't even feel like I need to apologize, but it's what I do, so, you know, I apologize if that, if there seemed like there was something untoward or anything about that. It was just, you know, how do we get through this? Because I knew, sitting there that night, and I think I said it, that we're gonna have, that we're gonna have people unhappy, and, you know, and we do, so.
I get that. So you have to understand too, the executive board, which is our treasurer, who isn't here tonight, our president, the vice president, and myself, the secretary, we're actually a 50-50 vote. So for, I mean, for myself, you know, I voted differently, but just because of the majority, staff felt that it was important to just give you the answers that you might have been looking for last week, even though we know that it's not gonna change anything moving forward. Just wanted to know, you know, let you guys, inform you of what their thought processes were.
Any questions or comments?
No, I appreciate the dialogue. I think, you know, just in kind of with every statement or consideration, there can be different perspectives, and if we have that two-way communication kind of opened up where, you know, people are taking a look at the agendas ahead of time and potentially coming on their own, or we may foresee something that we'd like to have some additional information on, I think that's important to kind of think about going forward.
Agreed.
Yeah, it'd be great. You're always welcome here. And the last meeting would have been beneficial had somebody been here to interject those thoughts.
I know. Then it would have, it would have been also good just to table it and just have us come in. We would have been happy to. I mean, I know that, you know, you said that you were under, you felt like you needed to do it because you were already later, so I get it.
And just even taking this into consideration, again, not being flip or anything.
Yeah.
Coming here, it's still a pretty close vote, right? 46, 40, and we could go. I feel bad that people are unhappy, but I'm comfortable with my vote to do that, and I don't know that a lot more necessarily discussion would have necessarily changed how I voted based on the two options, so.
Just to shed some light on the way people feel, it wasn't so much which calendar. At the end of the day, we work anyway, so it's whichever calendar gets picked. People felt a little disrespected because, and yes, not a lot of people responded, but those that did took the time to be thoughtful. We spent a lot of time with Stephen discussing all of these different dates, like we went back and forth about it. So there was thought put into it, and to take the time to do that and then not even really have our thoughts considered, and so I guess some people are feeling like, why even bother? Like, our opinion didn't matter. We're the ones that, we're, we, right? Not me. We are the ones that are here.
The membership.
Yes, thank you. I'm new at this. The membership are the ones that are in the building doing the work, and that includes administrative assistants, paraprofessionals, and teachers. Most of the vote was paraprofessionals, but they just, you know, the membership just kind of feels like they weren't heard. Like, it shouldn't matter that it was 40 to 46, just as your vote was close. Our vote was close, but you're.
Right, so taking that, I don't understand why people don't think that their thoughts were being concerned, or considered. We had lengthy discussion about it for however many minutes it was. It was the longest agenda item that we spoke about on there, and there was a lot of thoughtful consideration, a lot of good dialogue, a lot of questions that we had that we were answering, you know, going through, answering with input from Stephen, who was your liaison. So I respectfully don't understand why they don't feel heard, because there was a lot of, and it wasn't a unanimous vote, so things were being considered.
I think that some of our membership may not agree with your thinking that your conversations were thoughtful. A lot of it seemed.
Like we were extending.
Very derogatory.
We were extending a vacation.
And that was never a consideration of anyone's, ever. We, they had some, for, that's not true. I'm sure there are some staff that were like, you know, I wanna go on vacation, so I wanna start later, right? There's always some one-offs. But the majority of staff, it had nothing to do with extra vacation, or wanting the summer off, or not caring about the students. We wouldn't be here if we didn't care. So I think some staff members really just felt like they were being slapped in the face with disrespect. We get, the membership gets enough disrespect, and not in this community. No, 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 I'm not saying from you guys. I'm saying collectively, our profession has, in the past, not gotten the most respect. And I'm not saying that's anyone here. I'm not, you're making, I'm not saying that's anyone here, but just out there in the world during COVID, you guys all are aware of how hard we worked. All of us had to work hard to get through all of that. But I just think, you know, people just felt like some of the comments were a little disrespectful. Just like you want us here, you're welcome to come and visit my classroom anytime and spend the day, to really get a fair picture of what it's like. So I think some of the membership felt like they just, they weren't heard. Like, why did we bother voting if? We honestly didn't feel like it was going to even be an issue, I guess. I don't know how else to explain it. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So I'm gonna take an opportunity to jump in. I've talked to Michelle and Kristin about the schedule more times than we could probably count, and we went through a lot of the same exercises that people went through when probably considering their own vote. I think a couple of things that I can own and some feedback that we talked about a week or two ago. I think we were pretty clear in our conversations that any vote would be advisory or recommendation. It was still the purview of the school committee to vote on the calendar.
Absolutely.
I think we both missed on that email that was sent to staff to really be explicit about.
There were some staff that interpreted it incorrectly.
Yes.
So I think, like, in that way, an opportunity to learn from it. In the past, the three calendars prior to this one that I've been a part of, the process has been more like, here's a couple of calendars, give me your thoughts. Actually, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving was a day that was taken off the calendar at a recommendation or a suggestion from the GEA. So we have considered it, and Michelle and Kristin will tell you, we looked at 100 different ways, and the three days that they mentioned are only three of the days that could have been played with. There are other days that certainly could have been played with, but 180 or 183 days is 180, 183 days, and I think I had some concerns about this going out to a vote because of some of this, because 100, I said the three of us or four of us at one point having these conversations, we couldn't even land on like the same one, and not because it wasn't contentious or anything, but there's just a million different factors.
Sure.
And I will say, extending the vacation was not a primary factor in any of our conversations, and I apologize to the membership or to the committee if it was, if people thought that, if that was a perception. That was certainly not the perception I was trying to make, and I don't think the committee, but I certainly understand how it could have been perceived that way after, but I don't think there was any ill will around that. But I think that's one of the places maybe where I missed or we missed to say, like, maybe we should have crafted that email together and been really clear about that this is advisory, this is a recommendation to the committee.
Yes, new staff had a hard time wrapping around that, and that was an error on my part as the secretary and being, you know, an old member of the school. It wasn't something I was thinking of, and we did have a few new members that were like, but that's the calendar, and I'm like, we just have a say. Like, we just are recommending. Like, this is what we chose. So yes, that was totally my bad.
And I think the other place I missed was saying, this is on the agenda two weeks ago, maybe we should have a representative from the GEA there, because I do think, I have, I think, a really good relationship with the GEA.
Oh, yes.
And I feel like there are some things that, when this committee asks, I feel comfortable speaking to, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. And I think in this instance, I did not intend to speak out of turn, but the comments that I may have made were probably more connected to a small number of individuals, not the membership as a whole. And I was relaying some of our conversations, and I think that probably didn't provide the committee the information they needed, and then kind of reflecting back, it was like, I don't want it to seem like I'm the voice piece of the, and I don't think anyone thought that, but.
No.
Like, so those are just a couple of things that I've reflected on that I think could have done better on. So I can certainly own those pieces, and I think the process probably just needs to be a little more clear. I think the fact that we got to two calendars was progress, because I think at one point we were looking at three or four different calendars.
Right.
And we were like, how do we put these out to a vote? And then, so I think some of those things are just opportunities to be in a better place, but I appreciate what Michelle said specifically earlier, that like, the days are the days, and the teachers are here, and the staff is here, and the staff are committed, and I certainly recognize that and know that that's what's most important, and be it Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday in August, really makes no difference to the staff, but I recognize why they want their voice to be heard, and, you know, I think we certainly tried to do that in this process, but I recognize why some people don't feel like their voice was heard.
Well, it's definitely difficult with so many people involved. That makes it a million times harder, and we do, the board, and I think most of the membership do appreciate the opportunity to even have two calendars to look at and, you know, vote on. So I don't want you to think that we weren't grateful for that opportunity. We definitely were.
It was nice to be part of the conversation ahead of time, you know, as you were stepping into the time of picking a calendar yourselves.
Yeah, I think we thought like we were gonna figure it out, like we're gonna break it up in a way that everyone's gonna like, and I think that's the situation. 300-plus districts in Massachusetts, and there's probably 300-plus different calendars.
Sure.
Yep.
So I just wanna say one thing, if I may. I do wanna apologize if anything I said kind of rung in a disrespectful or dismissive tone, because that was certainly not my intention in kind of talking about all of this. I certainly understand what it feels like to want to be heard and validated and, you know, in all the work you do, and the time you put in, and the effort in all those pieces. I do think it's just, I'm still kind of hung on this one point, and I feel it's kind of an interesting one in terms of the very staggered start of, you know, a two-day week versus like a four-day week into a four-day week, or a two into a four, you know, depending on which calendar was voted on. Because I think in my mind, the intention was to provide the ability to have that time to establish those routines, and you're saying the same thing, but in a different way.
Agreed. So you wanted to.
So can I just speak to that as a classroom teacher of younger children? And it may be different at the high school. I can't speak for that. I've never worked with kids those age, that age. I don't think at the end of the day, it matters all that much, but it is difficult for students, especially how they are now. I don't know how. it is difficult for students, especially how they are now. I don't know how else to say that without-
Well, times have changed-
Yes.
Since post-COVID.
And they experienced transition.
Right. The way that they handle those things is a lot different. So there's a lot of that, you know, social, emotional kind of a thing that comes into play more so than ever.
And so coming in for a couple of days, giving them a couple of days to recuperate, and us as well, to be perfectly honest, it's a huge adjustment. Even if we're in here setting up our classrooms and getting ready for the school year, it's a big adjustment when you physically have a class full of kids in front of you. And then the following week, right, it's after Labor Day, so it's like four days, which again, is another great slow start. It's not a full week. And typically, we're not getting into curriculum yet. So it's nice to have that broken up, because four straight days of no curriculum can be difficult. So you kind of have to find a balance, because the kids may get bored. And when they get bored, it's not great. But then having, so the two days, having a few days off, the four days, having the weekend, and then coming back and like, we're hitting the ground running our first full week. Because we have to, like, some of the high school teachers had mentioned that they're already behind in some of the curriculum, just from any start at the beginning of the school year. But yeah, we typically will get right into curriculum at that point, because there's not enough days in the school year to get it all done.
The other thing, too, is that you had mentioned about, when you were talking about the calendar, if that Friday were a day of school, this could have been maybe a different conversation. And we totally agree. And that was something that we had, we had talked about, we have discussed, but that, we can't change that. And so when the calendar was presented to us, it, to us, it's, that day is gonna stay. So there wasn't that opportunity to pluck it out. Many staff had mentioned that that would be a day, you know. And I do know that people were like, well, you know, about attendance. But for us, the continuity, we're here. So if, you know, if people can be here, and the students can be here, because we're here, then it's great, you know. So anyway, so that might be something to think about, you know.
Yeah.
In the future. Yeah, no, not a problem.
Anything else?
Hi.
You want me to go with it?
Yes, please.
Forget the procedure, state my name.
Yeah, your name is good, just so everyone knows who you are.
Norman Racine, I teach next door. We're all parents, too, most of us. A lot of my friends are gonna have to make a choice in August, whether they're dropping their kids off at college, or they're coming here for PD if we start at the 22nd. And I want them to drop their kids off at college, but I feel that's the right thing for a parent to be doing. And my son's gonna be a senior next year. Yeah.
And I agree with that, Norm, if I can piggytail off that, because right now, we do have an administrator who is willing. This past year, I dropped my son off at college. And in our contract, it reads that we cannot take any time off the first two weeks of school. We need to be here for ourselves and for the children. Steven is very thoughtful and considerate, and he knew that, he knows that there are certain things that are necessary in our worlds, too. So with Steven here, it's been great. He's able to say, yes, I will allow that to be missed.
And with him leaving, I don't know that the next person is gonna be that amenable to giving people those types of exceptions. And so I was never-
I hear that. We don't know anything about when the new person's gonna be.
I know, right?
So I was never looking out for an extra long vacation or anything like that. It was always a question of, can I be here for work, or do I need to be with my family? And with the 22nd as a start date, it's pushing a lot of us against having to make that choice about here or home. It's not an easy choice for any of us to make.
So, I mean, I, I think anytime we start school in August, it doesn't matter, because my senior that graduated from Granby High last year and started school this year, she didn't start until September 2nd. So, so she was moving. So anytime I have friends that they're dropping their kids off August 7th, as late as September 5th. So anytime we start-
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and I think we, as the school committee, can certainly talk to whoever is in place for the next time, because we've had, we, you know, we sort of have precedent set for that, to be able to make those kinds of accommodations. And I think when we're talking about taking vacation, clearly, if someone's in the hospital sick, it's not like you're gonna get in trouble. If they're, you know what I mean? Like, I, I think we can be reasonable about those things. And if there's something that's, clearly, we're not asking you to choose school over your family, dropping a child off for a monument of-
You may not be.
Right.
But I don't know that other people aren't. You may not be here for how many terms. Like, all of this, to me, isn't permanent. All of these people. Like, I've been here for 24 years, and so many other different people on the school committee. You're my seventh super? Thanks. Wish you were my last.
I know.
So all of this is fine. And I feel as though we can come to you and have an open conversation, but that wasn't always the case, for those of us that have been here a long time. And it always has been a thing where I have felt much more comfortable if it's in writing. I have felt much more comfortable if it's not just a handshake, but if this is like, nope, this is how it's gonna get done. You're actually right. Some people do go to school significantly later, like September 5th, that kind of thing. But the earlier in August, to me, ran into that college schedule a little more than, say, August 26th. When did we come back this week? The 26th, the 28th, whatever that week was.
24th and 5th.
Yeah. And it, it looked as though so much more of the schedule was being backed up because of it. Whether it's the new teachers starting on the 20th, and then the potential for the middle school mutation or the step-up day, whatever it is that they do in the summer. For the junior, it's being up to 15-ish. Can't remember the exact dates. But those kinds of days were concerning. The other thing, which I'm sure you've heard, is the temperature next door isn't great most of the time, because of the lack of air conditioning and the heating system. Yes, we get hotter days, but it seems like the further into August we go, it's more likely to be an issue. Two or three days this year, it was probably hot.
And I'm looking, I'm looking at September 2026, if everybody's wondering. We're in, like, two more years of this cycle where Labor Day is on the early end, so Labor Day being like the 3rd, the 2nd, the 1st is pushing it. And then Monday, September 7th, 2026.
Who's the other 20?
It swings it back where it probably feels more tenable for teachers, because then we're saying, even if you're back a week and a half, you're looking at August 26th, 27th, I think is what I'm hearing, right? Like, because the regular calendar is not stagnant, but in some ways, our calendar is stagnant, because it's been predicated on that Labor Day date in some way, I think is what I'm hearing.
So I think what I'm getting from all of this is, I appreciate you guys all coming tonight and talking about this. Clearly, we already said that for future meetings and votes, if there's something that we think that we need from you guys, that you could contribute to us, that would be good. The calendar, I mean, mental note, regardless of what our thoughts are, we're gonna meet together, despite however, you know, many meetings that you guys had collaboratively with Steven, obviously, it still did spark the amount of conversation we had. And I do hope that through some of it, though, like Jen said, I mean, that was a, I don't think any of us thought we were gonna be talking about a calendar for 40 minutes.
It was, it was a long calendar.
We were very much indifferent.
Yeah, we're up to another 40 minutes now.
Right, that's true. Right, that was calendar. But we, I do hope, and I, you know, heard a stuff from Michelle saying, I do hope people felt heard and validated and not slighted. I hugely apologize if any of that came out. I think that, I know, we certainly understand and appreciate all that you guys do, and I think I tried to say that as much as I could, while, all of us did. Like, I do think the root was there. There were just so many questions. I think going forward, obviously, we're gonna all meet together. But I do hope that, as a whole, and rewatching, that there, you know, is pieces where, you know, you guys were definitely considered by, I think, everyone here, regardless of, you know, other comments. At one point, we all said multiple times, like, this is, you know, what we were here to do, and our intention was never, I think, to speak on anybody, to disrespect or downplay any of, you know, our staff. I think we try so hard to not do that. So it, like, kills me that that was even, you know, brought up. So I just, my heart goes there. But other than that, I think at this point, we have all of our notes, we definitely will just circle back a lot earlier, because I think at this point, at least for myself, we did talk it to death. And I think even if we did again, I don't know it really would be any different.
And we weren't, and like, right, no, no, right, like, we were just coming here just to share voices and not to ask for change or, you know, even think about that. We just wanted to make sure that membership felt like we were sharing.
Right. No, and I do, that was more on my own, saying that, like, not on that, but just that regardless, the fact that it was a three to two, there was obvious consideration. I think we're, on whichever spectrum you were on, there was consideration having a three to two vote. So that's all I had. But thank you.
I really appreciate you guys coming in-
Thank you.
-and sharing your concerns.
I did look through the rest of your agenda, and it does not appear that there's anything on there that would need information from the association.
I would say, except for superintendent search, if there's, needs to be someone on the committee.
Right, we have to, right, that comes after for us. But absolutely, we would absolutely enjoy doing that and being a part of it.
Well, not enjoy.
Well, not enjoy it.
Let's make him not want to leave sooner than he has to.
Right, exactly.
Oh, my goodness.
So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Any other visitor comments? Okay, next up is Special Education Parents Advisory Council, CPAC.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, so we were gonna try to make it to the last meeting, but then my daughter got strep, so we're here today. I just wanted to quickly introduce the CPAC councils back up and running, a little bit better this year than last year. Actually, our-
Why don't you tell us who you are first?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm Elizabeth Legear. I like to be called L. Do you need my address, too?
No, no.
Okay, perfect. So we're trying to get the CPAC committee back up and running. As of right now, we have our social, emotional learning training happening on Zoom. We also have the new IEP form training coming out soon at the end of this month. And we do meet a little bit more regularly this year than we did last year. I think I did two meetings last year. This time, we've already had two more meetings. We're trying to have one more meeting before the end of the school year. We're also trying to put together a parent survey to get the word out a little bit more. And so we thought it would be a great idea for us to come and introduce ourselves again and say hi, and that we're here. And we also have a page on Facebook that we try to, like, pump information out to folks. So if anybody wants to do more information, to follow up with me on Facebook.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's it. Any questions or comments?
No, I appreciate-
Wonderful, thank you.
You being here, and it's, I think, is an important bridge, sometimes, between caregivers, families, and school, to provide support for students. So, thank you. And if you have anything that's going on, if you wanna pop in for a visitor's comment, if you have a meeting coming in or coming up or whatever, for visitor's comment, you don't need to be on the agenda. So you can just come in and say that you've got a meeting coming up. We'd love to have the collaboration. Or if there's something coming up where you think that you need, we'd love to have you, you know, sit and speak with us.
Perfect.
And I've noticed lately, there's been, we have our weekly newsletters from the elementary school and the high school. I've noticed, you know, CPAC's on there.
Yeah.
But if you have anything additional, obviously, you know our emails, but feel free, any additional information, flyers, things like that, so we can try to get it out there as well. But that's, I know I've noticed that's on every single one, which is great to see.
Yeah, yeah, we've been trying to do it a little bit more, so, good. So the next one, I will definitely CC you all.
I just wanna say, too, like, for anybody watching, Special Education Parents Advisory Council, this is a resource for any parent or family. It doesn't have to be the parent of a student with an IEP, or, right, sometimes you might have questions about your student or progress that they're making, or-
Or need resources.
Or need resources. And this is a place where you can go and have a conversation that's not on camera, that is private, that you can get some of those resources, get maybe not always answers, but pointed in the direction where you could find answers that you're looking for. I think it's just a valuable resource in any community, and one that parents probably don't know enough about to know that they can go and use it as that resource. And I think L said at one of her early meetings when I was here, she was like, we've just been chatting, me and this other parent for the last 20, and it's just been good to chat about-
Yeah, just talk and listen.
-their children and what's happened in their class, and just even outside of school type of things. So it is a valuable and underutilized resource. So anybody watching who has questions can certainly reach out to my office, either the schools, or check the newsletters, like Stephanie said. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, next is a school choice.
So there is a document in your folder for proposed school choice in 2425. I did meet with the principals and Stacy last week to go over recommendations. One thing I wanna point out is on the right-hand column, the second box down, that's what we're projecting for choice students who are coming into Granby graduating, and then choice students who are leaving Granby, and Granby residents attending charter schools. So doesn't probably seem like a whole lot, but that's like a net positive of four students that we start with off the bat potentially this year, if all goes well for those students and they stay on track to graduate. So that's one of the things that we look at here. And then we did not make any recommendation in kindergarten. Kindergarten registration was taking place last week. We'll take a look at those and potentially bring something to our next meeting if there are spaces. I don't know if you wanna go grade by grade. I don't know if you want to take a vote to just say, in general, we're gonna participate in school choice first, because that is a vote that should be made.
Well, we can start at that one, but then we, I wanna talk about this, because these numbers are startling. Resident enrollment is scary to me. But why don't we first take a vote about if we're going to participate in school choice?
I'll make a motion to participate in school choice for school year 2425.
Could I have a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the hard, easy part is done, the easy hard part. Now, the seats. So go ahead, Steven, I didn't mean to interrupt, but the resident enrollment is quite low with 548.
Yes, so 548 is our, basically, we're, that's total enrollment. That includes students who are currently registered for kindergarten. So if you add next year's kindergarten, we're closer to 617, but still fairly low. I don't have it in front of me, what it was last year at this time. And again, the way that we wanna use school choice is to fill classrooms, not create new classrooms, while also recognizing residents could move in or out at any time. So kind of being thoughtful about the number of seats that we open. Each grade was a little bit different based on configuration. We're projecting, I'm gonna start in first grade, we're projecting 41 residents based on that number. We did not feel comfortable opening up school choice seats at this point. That would leave us with one class of 20 and one class of 21, and two classes in first grade. Second grade, we have 36 students that we're anticipating having for next year. You know, we do think we could have up to four, that would make it 2020, but we would recommend two. So the number in parentheses is the recommendation, but also recognizing there could be more seats available. But again, I think we've talked a little bit this year about saying, opening up those four seats now, if we have some residents who move in, could, again, make the classrooms grow in the interim. So, third grade- So, third grade, similar situation, so, I'm sorry, second grade would still have two sections, similar to first grade, third grade, um, would go, that's a three-section grade.
My question is third grade, Stephen, is it says new resident enrollment, grade three, like there's an other notes, and I've marked one there, so that would potentially put us at fifty-eight?
Yep, so-
So, that's the two?
That's the recommendation of the two to get to 60, and the reason we're comfortable making that recommendation, not all students in that grade um, are in the Gen Ed setting at all times.
Okay. Which grade was that?
I'm sorry, three.
So, a little bit of a flexibility there, but yeah, so the recommendation was, we're anticipating that student, they haven't officially registered, but we're anticipating a new resident enrollment in grade three next year. So, that family's reached out, but there's still time, right? Four, five, and six are three-section grades, um, you'll see four and six are over 60 already, um, grade five's at 58, that's a place where down the road, we could certainly look into opening a spot or two, um, but again, as you guys know, if you get a couple residents in, that could shift. Do you want to maybe stick K to six first, or want me to go through everything?
Uh, what do you think? You guys want to just have them go through the whole thing, we can, yeah, why don't you just-
I guess I'll just real, oh, never mind, sorry. I'm good.
So, in grade seven, so seven and eight probably look a little strange, right? So, grade seven, um, the way that we approached that this year was taking a look at the ELA classes we're offering, right? Every student is taking ELA, while there's some electives and some choice into math and other places, they're all taking ELA, and at grade seven next year, we're planning for three sections of ELA, which could get us to that um, 2020 and 20 potentially. Where in eighth grade, we're currently planning on two sections of ELA. So, already a little bit bigger of a class, um, having 25 and 25. Ninth grade, similar, three sections, um, and we're right at that 59 number. Grade 10, two sections, grade 11, one section, or, I'm sorry, three sections, um, hold on. Grade 10. Grade 10 and 11, two sections, sorry. And same in grade 12.
And this is for next year's?
This is 2425, yes.
So, they're like-
So, a lot could change.
So, I'm not, so you have the twen-, the kindergarten right now is a kindergarten that hasn't started.
That, correct. So, that's the group who was registering last week, that's, and that's, 29 is incomplete because we were still registering on Thursday when we did this work.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Okay. Let's get to it. What do y'all think?
Those are the numbers.
I think it makes sense, I like, um, I just want to make sure that whichever decision we make, that we're just stating that we're going to be doing the numbers in the parentheses.
That's, yeah, that's the-
It would be that column.
So, that's new this year?
Right.
We didn't do that in the past. I think last year, we said we could fit nine students, and I think what we found and what I've been trying to communicate, I don't know how effectively, but um, because it's hard to get a grasp on, there's just so much movement that could happen. The numbers in parentheses are a bit more conservative, that would allow us, we feel like some space to say, we could accept some students, if new students move in, we wouldn't have to like change anything, come back for another vote, but if new students weren't to move in, we could come back in May or June and request a couple additional openings.
Correct, and I appreciate that. I, I get where that is, I just wanted to make sure that anyone's watching it, that that's what we're, we're talking at, those um, numbers. And as we did this year, I think that as those kind of ebb and flows happened, we came back together and determined what was best for, you know, um, that classroom, so that to me makes sense. I appreciate the way this is laid out, and all the notes is very helpful. Minimize my questions.
Another area that I'm starting to get a hold of.
I guess, well, actually, I will just ask one other thing. The students listed on the census that did not respond to mailings, what, where are those children being educated? We just don't know.
So, those, that's for the K registration, that's based on K, so we don't-
Those asterisks, I guess, that said that really threw me.
So, one, they could have potentially moved out in the meantime, or we just haven't been able to connect with them, yeah.
I was like, are we missing like eighth, second, and 12th graders somewhere?
Nope, those are all in kindergarten.
Oh, my gosh.
And they're not currently in our pre-K.
I cut my caffeine, told me like not even one a day, it's clearly not working. I'm good.
All right, if there's no other questions, I think we can, I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to accept the proposed school choice availability 2425, as projected in these numbers.
Want me to read it just?
Please.
So, we're proposing for school choice seats in 2425, in grade two, two seats, in grade three, two seats, in grade seven, two seats, in grade 10, five seats, in grade 11, two seats.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is a solar eclipse.
So, if you've seen the news, we are in, I'm going to get this wrong, we're in the zone that will be affected by the solar eclipse on April 8th, we are not, I did my research, I was so much better, we're not like directly, but we're in like the 90% area, so um, and of course, it's, the timing is that it would impact our area right around the dismissal specifically for elementary school, so um, we would like to propose purchasing solar eclipse glasses. We have a quote for 700 of them, which, again, students and staff would have the option, we do have 720 students, there is a bit of an assumption being made that not everybody would want them, and the junior, senior high school does dismiss about 45 minutes to an hour earlier, so they won't necessarily all be on campus, but we would have them available for anybody who would want them. And this was not something that I planned for in our FY24 budget last year. So, we do think there are funds in the already approved FY24 budget we could use. If we weren't able to find the approximately $470, then um, with your permission, we could use rural school funds. But our first hope would be to um, utilize our approved operating budget, but this would just be a change to that.
Questions or comments?
Solar eclipse, eclipse, very cool, was it like once every two decades or something?
Once, about every seven years.
Yeah, so that would be a neat thing to observe and do safely.
Yep. Jen knows that well, because-
Stephen and I have a rather odd connection about the eclipse. He met both of my girls on, in July of 2014, his very first day-
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, sorry, 2017, his very first day in the district. My cousin, who was watch, babysitting or watching the girls for the summer, was here to pick up some stuff, and my daughter Meredith and my nephew, well, my little cousin Jack wouldn't look up because the older girls, Eva and her older cousins, had told them that if they looked in the sky, it would melt their eyes.
My first memory in Granby.
So, Meredith was like, "It's nice to meet you." Wouldn't look up.
We were like in an interior office at that point, there was no sun.
She wouldn't look up, she was afraid, she didn't understand why her aunt was kicking her in outside where it wasn't safe. Oh, it's fantastic, and she's going to murder me when she sees us out there for everybody.
Safely shake hands.
So. We will make sure she has a pair of glasses this time around.
That's so funny.
Yeah, they'll need them for softball, baseball, lacrosse.
Right. That's funny, right? And she will be there for softball, so that's fantastic, I'll have to make sure some learn her vipers and her everything. Oh, funny. Um, so Todd, do you think we can find the 400 and something dollars?
We should be able to.
Excellent.
Can I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of solar eclipse glasses.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one I'm going to want to talk about, let's just skip over it.
For the last-
Okay.
Um, superintendent search. So, as we've alluded to a number of times, Stephen's given us notice and will be leaving us at the end of the year. So, that means we have the um, the joyous occasion to commence a superintendent search. So, we um, when we did it last time, uh, we had gone through, and Jill, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had talked and gotten quotes last time, and we decided as a committee that we would do a lot of the work ourselves, um, and use MASC as a resource, as it was the cheaper option, but it was a ton of work for the committee, um, the search committee. So, I guess we need to consider all of that and um, try to figure out how, how we're, how we're going to do this also, because which budget would it come out of?
Depends on your timeline.
Because if we're starting now, it's, it's not, it's just this year's budget, but the salary would be for next year's budget. Questions, comments? I'm looking in the um, the old folder, and I know, like, some of the stuff-
You could send some guidance.
Yeah, Kimberly had sent us some guidance as well, but I think I forwarded it to everybody. But, you know, some of the work is partially done, our brochure that we created from the last time is um, probably not that outdated, would just need, you know, some numbers might need to be um, updated, um, dates and things, but um, I don't know, I'm just sort of battling, so, anybody, take it away.
Uh, I wasn't here for the last one.
Right.
Uh, I think it might be important to maybe use a third-party professional, some type of consultant to assist in the search.
Do you guys remember all what the cost of that was?
I think it was around 10, 10 to 13.
10 to 13, and we still did have to be a part of, obviously-
Oh, yeah, we still had to do a lot of that.
Correct, so just for context, I think it was about $10,000, and we did still have to do a lot of the pieces that were done. But just for your knowledge, um, and it's always just tough, especially like just to call it what it is, we're going into budget season and a, quite a deficit, so I think that we do need to be mindful of kind of what would that bring to the table versus what can we take on, knowing it was a very big undertaking, but I think unfortunately, no matter what you do, it's going to be quite an undertaking.
So, I think in terms of um, speaking to it directly from the previous search committee, first as like a participating member, and then as a school committee member in it, um, it wouldn't have happened as smoothly as it did if it wasn't for current staff that was also on the search committee, stepping in and doing a large bulk of the work as well. So-
Would you, would you please, because you were, you were instrumental on the, on the committee last time too, Megan, so.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
I didn't know that I would be so much of this conversation, but I guess I should be. Yeah, we did a lot of work on the backend to make sure the flyer was right, getting the screening, the posting, you know, I, you know, Ally especially was instrumental in kind of leading that work um, with the committee, but, you know, it was, it was a lot of work, it was, it was a big undertaking, but I also recall, you know, the pool of candidates is, was um, a concern at the time, I don't know if it's gotten better or worse in the last few years, um, I think it just depends, I think there's things about Granby that are really attractive to, to people, but I think there are other drawbacks that, you know, um, because we're small and because of like budgetary reasons, that can be challenged, but the community is great, so I think someone looking for a good community would, could and would be happy here. So, I just, I, I wonder if it's worthwhile to have someone from MASC just to talk with you guys a little bit more, because not all of you were on the committee at the time, I don't know if that's something that, um, I forgot who our contact is.
It was Tracy. Tracy, so, and to clarify though, Tracy wasn't the $10,000, was?
No. So, that- We had a contact with MASK, and I think the hope and the intention was that that could be used as a, a very reliable resource, which it was.
Yes.
I think the tricky part was in the timing, because things start to happen and it moves so quickly, that you're then trying to communicate with somebody else about your next steps, with, with not wanting to make a misstep, and the timeliness of when that happens and how it unfolds with the rapidness of what's expected to happen as part of the committee, were two very difficult and challenging things to balance.
The other thing that I think is worth considering, um, and I think Kimberly, she did mention it in her email somewhere, is that a, a potential option would be to consider an interim, um, based on the timing and other factors, and I do believe that MASC has a list of potential interns that they would be willing to discuss without a cost, um, so that is another potential consideration for the committee.
And that's where I said with the budget, would that be this year or next year? If you're looking to fill a permanent superintendency by July 1st, then that is going to be in a fiscal '24. If it's an interim, and it's a one-year interim, or whatever the committee decides, then that, you would make that an FY25 and use that timeframe to build out your, your search committee and your planning.
I feel like at this point in time, it's worth investigating kind of all the different avenues in terms of costs, I know she mentioned um, not only MASK, but another third party.
Nazbo or something, I think it's called.
And then the potential of an interim too, because I feel like we are pushing, I feel like at this point, when we did the search committee the last time, in March, we were having interviews and doing all those pieces.
We were about a mu-
We had an interim.
About a month.
We had an interim at the time too, so we knew what we were planning for, whereas this time, we don't have that knowledge ahead of time.
So, making sure that we kind of investigate all avenues of what that looks like and the pros and cons to any of them, I think would be worthwhile.
I have seen, and starting to prepare some of these things, a, a number of the search committees are 10 months or longer for a superintendency.
Ours was not that long last time, so I don't know if we were just lucky, or-
I think it was the anticipation that it was happening, so we knew-
Yeah.
-by January.
In, in twen-, March 2020, that's when the superintendent gave their notice, and then Carol took over as interim, because it was also March 2020, and things were moving quickly, um, and that was, you know, I think kind of the right move at the time, and then the, then, right, we were able to start planning, and, you know, fortunately, we had an internal candidate that made things like move, I don't know, I mean, we had options, I think then, so, we had several candidates that we interviewed in the end, so, um, but there was a lot of buildup, like in December even, you know, going into it.
But I think what you're trying to say too, is like it didn't happen-
Like in a four-month-
When Cheryl decided to leave, like there was that interim.
You had a, over a year's notice to, to have that, that you could see.
And I know that there's like another district that's put out for a superintendent for fall of '25, I think that's Hampton, too, is it right?
July of '25, I think.
Because they're with an interim now.
They're with an interim now.
And they're going to have their interim for a second year.
So, um, as far as directionally, so we know what we're doing, I think we need to have um, some of that information, I know, um, I, I think Todd had looked and some of the, like, the average um, cost for the interim- I, I think Todd had looked and some of the, like, the average, um, cost for the interims was-
Hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty is the information that I was given.
Um, so that's higher than we have right now, but interim would be on this, on this budget, on the-
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Yep.
In, in that case, I guess it's potentially an interim plus.
Correct.
So, I think it's, you're right, fair to consider that.
Procedureally seems like the way to go, given the timeline and the past events that have been laid out.
And we would, we still have to do interviews and everything on interim, you don't like just pick, you know, you know, and if they even would be interested, right?
Correct.
And that's where Tracy can be really helpful and just saying this is that process and get it up and-
I think that'd be the next step, would be to contact Tracy and get just for an overall picture, regardless of, you know, the different options, especially since she helped last time, as far as what could be available for an interim, what a search may look like, and then do we reach out to that other company too and just get a quote? We might as well, it's not going to hurt to have more information than we need.
So I've been beginning the process of writing an RFQ for this, um, I'm going to need a little support from mentors, um, does this go out into combines? How does an RFQ, it doesn't bind us in a request for a quote, um, but it's, I believe it's more involved than just reaching out, that there is a formal process of notifying that we are interested in services.
So I think, could maybe just hit pause on that, I think Todd's right, and that would require the committee to vote, to have Todd put that together, and we didn't have a vote on the agenda tonight. So, I think some of the other stuff that's being discussed can happen and we can either put a vote on for our next meeting or schedule a short other meeting in the next two weeks. Um, but in the meantime, I'm happy, Jen, or any one of you, whoever's contacting MASC to sit on the call, or I'm sure Todd would be willing to do that as well, um, to just kind of pick their brain and like get their thoughts about the timing and get their thoughts about, um, potential interim candidates and what that could look like, and then at least you'll have that information, and then you could decide whether, um, putting together a request for quo- quotes, um, for a search would make sense.
I have had people reach out to me already, uh, from the community that have expressed interest in being on the search committee, so that's at least, um, positive, you know.
Yeah, that's good, I actually have as well, so that's-
You know, that's, uh, that's at least good, that maybe it won't be so difficult to, um, get people to participate in that manner. Um, so I guess, um, I can send Tracy an email and see if she can, uh, has time for a call and we'll try to get that. And then, um, this will be on the agenda just going forward, I would say it's going to be just, um, we'll just have it live there for now, um. Anything else that you all want to, um, make sure we take care of?
Not really at this time, but as we go through the process.
Yeah. It's also daunting because we're right in the middle of budget season too, so it's hard, you know, um, that's one of the things that I'm a little concerned about, um, but we need to make sure that we account for it, however, um, however it looks, and I would rather, um, yeah. Okay. Anything else then? All right, so I will send an email, reach out to Tracy, I'll copy you guys in and we'll, we'll go from there. Okay, next up is, um, MSBA Statement of Interest.
So we discussed this at our last meeting, but just, um, prepared, a couple of years ago, prepared a statement of interest for the Granby Junior Senior High School for a building project. Um, I sub- I included the, um, draft in the folder tonight. It is nearly the same one we submitted last year, just updated some things for, um, this year. I did get myself on the select board agenda for next week because select board needs to approve this as well. Um, but wanted to make sure that the school committee was aware before doing so. Um, it's not due officially until April twelfth, so we do have a month.
All right, so I don't need to read that thing into-
Not today, we'll put this on for a vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, but at the next meeting to vote on it, but just so you knew, I was going in front of select board, um, for a vote.
Excellent. Okay.
Any question? I don't know if anyone has a question.
We have enrollment on there, but I feel like we just went over that with, um, school choice, but we can look at it.
Enrollment is actually, we've had some movement, but it is the same.
It's not updated.
Now we know it takes.
There it is. At least we've been consistent for the last couple of months.
Yep, we've stayed pretty steady. Once I can get a comment.
Any questions or comments on what you're seeing on the enrollment dashboard?
Hopefully it stays steady in June.
Yes.
I just remember that like June to August was so frustrating.
Well, we could get our graduates, our graduates we take out, so we are going to see a dip in June.
Or not June.
I, I hope.
Yeah, sorry, there's a dip in June, but, um, what was?
Hmm? It's usually right when we come back, right? It's always right, Lois, right before we have to submit it.
Well, correct.
Because we haven't fully enrolled everybody yet, it's-
October one.
I'm looking at June and then I, yes, it was October, that's, that like continues. Looks good, I like how it's like this, I think we've said that a lot of times, but it's very helpful, so. If Stacy's on here, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. All right, Stephen, you're up.
I'm happy to announce that obviously sad to see Faith go, um, but Faith Ramos wasn't able to commit to the student rep, um, piece at this point and the student council this past week elected Cole Fuller from the class of two thousand twenty-five to take over as the student rep to the school committee. Cole and I have been in touch already, um, unfortunately he could not make it tonight, but he is planning to be here at our March twenty-sixth meeting. Um, very brief FY twenty-five budget update, I did speak to the town manager last Friday looking for some guidance around our budget planning, so you know, but the public may not know, um, we had submitted our initial budget in late December, we had a meeting in late January. Um, we did have a meeting last week with, um, representative, a representative from Representative Dome's office. Um, Representative Carey and Senator Olivera were there, um, we had a good conversation, um, but unfortunately it sounded like it wasn't the first time they were hearing this from a district, um, especially a rural district about the funding formula not really working in our advantage and how much of an impact one or two things could, could have on the overall budget, so, um, you know, they left their, I think, understanding, like advocating for better funding for rural schools, uh, a better funding formula for special education were two of the things that we really pushed on them, um, and I, I think they heard our message. But I did reach out to the town manager last week and he thought he would have more guidance for me by the end of this week, um, because the Pathfinder budget is set tomorrow night and capital improvement expenses are either tonight or Thursday night, so you would have a little bit more information, um, by the end of the week. So, my hope is that we have that by the end of the week, we can start our work based on that guidance, connect with, um, FinCom who we haven't been in touch with because we're still a little bit up in the air. Um, our goal is to kind of continue to push through with the timeline that we set, um, for that early April vote for the school committee. That being said, if the budget vote won't be until the June town meeting, we would have some leeway on the backend if we needed it. Um, we would just need that information, um, sooner than later, so. Um, again, want to update dual enrollment early college work group, we had our, I think, final meeting last week. Now we're working on drafting some recommendations and I'm working on drafting recommendations based on the four or five meetings that we've had. Um, I will share those recommendations back to that committee for their feedback and anticipate bringing them here likely in early April. Um, boys lacrosse, uh, spring sport starts in a week from yesterday. Boys lacrosse, because we are doing maintenance to the junior varsity soccer field, which also serves as the boys lacrosse field, is under construction, we have been trying to work with the town to identify another, um, location in town. We had identified, um, Brown Ellison as a potential fit and had reached out in January to the town about that and, um, Dylan and I went to the select board meeting last night and unfortunately the Parks Commission and, um, town felt like that field holds water and wouldn't be playable for the lacrosse, especially for the older kids, there's a lot of younger kids using Brown Ellison typically, um, and because of the amount of water it holds, they felt that that wouldn't work. Um, they asked that we come back and look on campus again, which we are willing to do, there's just not many more places on campus, um, so Dylan does have a plan B. Unfortunately, that would require our boys lacrosse to play home games in South Hadley. Um, so we are working out some of those logistics, uh, we have a meeting on this again tomorrow, but it's been something we've been trying to navigate and work with, but, um, there's not really, again, I think people will look at a campus and say, what about out front or what about behind the JV baseball field? It needs to be a flat surface, behind the JV, the baseball field is not a flat surface, we use it as, um, a practice soccer field. Mr. Dormin can certainly tell you that it's not a flat surface and not appropriate to play games on. Um, we make do for practice and then in the spring, we're using all our baseball and softball diamonds, which means outfield that we could use in the fall aren't available to us in the spring. We did consider the front of the building, but lacrosse especially poses some risk to traffic on two oh two, um, with the balls going, so we were really looking for eight games, the eight home games, um, in April and May. Um, the select board did invite us back in late April to see how the fields have dried up, to see if we can get a couple of games, especially senior night in town, so that is a work in progress. And then the final announcement, um, is that the next scheduled town election is to be held on Monday, May twentieth. There are school committee spots that are up for election this year and the last day to take papers out per the town clerk is Thursday, March twenty-eighth, so little over two weeks for people to pull papers.
So on that, we, if people, we need people to pull papers. Um, Jill and I are up for reelection, I'm, I am pulling papers and I, I, Jill is not, and Stephanie, um, sent in her resignation effective May twentieth, um, which is the date of election, so I am pulling papers, but I can't guarantee that I will be elected again, so we have three, technically have three open positions for school committee. So if people are interested, have questions on how it works or whatever, please reach out. Um, I think my email's on the website, um-
They can certainly reach out to central office and we can get messages to people.
But, you know, um, we, uh, we need some good, we need some good people to help us out, so. Um, I think that's, that's all, yeah. Um, all right, Todd?
Uh, only a couple of things, so we received the final contract, uh, for the architect and design services for the junior senior high school kitchen project, um, and with that, we, the engineer came out on Thursday, um, revisited the site, we did, we went through the kitchen, the whole wing, he took measurements, he's preparing, um, a scope of work for us that will be an initial meeting with the architect and the engineer, um, Stephen, probably John Sullivan and me, and, uh, I'll begin our real kickoff for the project, uh, from there, uh, we'll start, they'll help us draft what we need for things to go out to bid. And then we'll get our timeline and hopefully we are beginning construction in June and completing in the fall. And the last thing, we did get an update, uh, from DESI, um, several of our grants got a small allocation adjustment, um, for our Title One ESA grants, our IDEA grants and our MYCAP, uh, which is a program that we do at the junior senior high school for career readiness. Uh, so there's some adjustment there.
Adjustment to the good?
All in the good.
All in the positive, not big numbers, but, not big numbers, but-
We'll take it.
Exactly, we'll take it, and so, uh, the department heads, we've been working to submit those revised budgets to DESI.
So I have a question about the budget. Um, so with the special ed costs going up so dramatically, do we have no recourse to go to the state for help for that, like bypass the town when we know we can't? Like, say, hey, Massachusetts, your law has put us in this, we need money, like, can we not do that?
So I can speak to that a little bit, so, um, we did apply for extraordinary relief this year because of the fourteen percent increase and due to other costs for, um, students who meet that circuit breaker threshold, um, so we just submitted that last week. I just got a little notification to, you know, review a couple little things and then it will be, uh, there. It looks like we will qualify, I'm guessing, based on the calculations they've given us that will, um, qualify for some additional funds, it doesn't cover everything, obviously, but it is something. Um, and then there's also reserve relief which has, um, a little bit of a different dynamic to it, it basically allows districts to take money now that they would otherwise get in next year's circuit breaker.
Yeah, but that just kicks a can down the road.
Correct. That, that one does, that's, um, the extraordinary relief, that was just additional funds because I'll submit circuit breaker again in June, um, June, it's June and July, um, and then that will be like what our allocation will be for next year, so this extraordinary relief amount will be helpful for us, um, and-
An extraordinary relief, Megan, stop me if I'm wrong, means that we've spent twenty percent more this year than last year in allowable special education costs, so pretty significant threshold to qualify for extraordinary.
And many districts, I think, are submitting for extraordinary relief because of that fourteen percent OSD increase last year. So, and there is another small, albeit much smaller increase going into FY, um, twenty-five for, um, out-of-district tuition as well. But we do try and claim for students in districts who do have, you know, a great number of needs and, you know, we expect will hit the threshold.
And I'm also thinking like with the placements that we have that are out of district, when some of those costs, you know, are so, I just, it, it seems that there can't be too, too many places where that's palatable, you know, when you're, when you're looking at almost a million dollars for, for those things, you know. I don't see how the state can think that people can afford it, so we can't go back to them for that, like, we can't-
They, I mean, I think that's where like, you know, speaking with, um, those in legislation can bring about those changes and they have been working on increasing the reimbursement, you know, allowable reimbursement, the transportation reimbursement has increased regarding special transportation, um, over the last few- special transportation, um, over the last few years. But it's very, you know, uh, small compared to the amounts that they're asking for, for tuition to cover those, um, students' needs and the programming. And we've seen that too, when, you know, just, it just costs more to do business these days.
Sure.
So the extraordinary relief is that only, is that extra revenue, that unanticipated revenue that we would get and we have to use it in FY24? So.
So we're looking to make, you know, look at, our, we've already been talking about our, the budget where it stands right now in special ed and, you know, how do we best use our, our, our funds to keep us in, in good standing and use the money effectively?
Can we proactively apply for next year?
Can.
They open a window typically in March, late February, early March. So at that point, you've gotten through enough of your budget, so you're being able to project out for the rest of the year. So every year it does open. Last year we applied, but didn't qualify.
No, we didn't qualify last year. Um, but we had a feeling it would, we would qualify this year, so we applied again. But it's worth going through the process if you feel like you might be close. Um, yeah. And then they'll make adjustments when you do your end of the year one. They will, that will be like, you're known, you know, you know what happened.
The actual.
At that point. So they'll make adjustments if things change, they'll give you more, they haven't, they will give you less, they will, you know, from the number. But that doesn't, I don't believe that includes the extraordinary relief. I don't think they'll give you more extraordinary relief at that point, but they'll give you what you, what you're supposed to be getting for the next school year.
Okay.
Now, I just have a question for Todd. Can you just give us a update or a reminder on the budget calendar, what things are coming up? Are we, are we doing the public forum Tuesday, the 26th?
Yes. And on the.
So I'm sure that we're getting that out to the community as well.
Second, and I, um, added it to both schools newsletters. Uh, that'll go out this week and ask the principals to keep those on their newsletters.
Terrific.
And it went out and it's going to go out in the Gazette as well.
I just have to say though, I mean, I kind of want to put a pin in that because if we don't know what we're getting from the town at that point or what we can even consider from the town, if it's even voted out, like, I don't know. Is it the right time to have a forum if we don't have those numbers or do we do it with the worst-case scenario?
You have to do it with the worst case.
I think in a way, we're at that point probably better off going with the worst-case scenario. In the, in the hopes that that would catch people's attention as well.
Sure.
But I anticipate we'll have some more guidance by then.
Were you able to meet with the finance committee at all to have a, I remember that was, the goal was to meet with them around this time?
So we haven't met with them yet.
We haven't, right?
For a little bit more direction, uh, from the town accountant, um, to put that together. Here's what our budget, what we're really working with or anticipate working with.
And I have it on my calendar to reach out to finance committee to schedule something, but I've been holding off, waiting for some of that guidance because, I mean, we could certainly meet with them and talk about where we're at with what we have. And I don't think that's a bad idea to do. I was just hoping that when we have the initial meeting, we would have some more of that information.
Right.
I have a quick operations question about the bus situation with bus two. Uh, it's no longer running for, till the 15th or this?
So I, yeah, I'm, I have it on my list for tomorrow. Um, I got the number of days that bus two hasn't been operating for the year. I received that today, um, from East Meadows Administration Assistant Caitlin. So I'm going to call the bus company and find out what's the plan and really look at our contract as well. What is the recourse? You know, do we have any recourse for being without a bus for so many days?
I just didn't know if they're going to refund us for.
That's what he's saying, yeah.
Yep. That's one thing that I'll be looking, looking at.
Yep. Yeah, because it's been spotty at times, but now like this is a whole week without them. So we've been keeping track of the days that it hasn't run because we have those questions as well. Look like we're paying for a service. So.
All right. If there's nothing else, Jill?
Um, Plowder meets the 27th of this month, so I'll have more then. But I did add in, um, information into the folder if anyone wants to view it.
All right. Um, so for agenda, next time superintendent search will continue to live on there. Anything else for next time?
I had MSBA vote.
Okay.
We'll add Cole Fuller for the student rep.
Yeah. Subcommittees?
I was wondering if we should do those or, um, I thought we had a lot more to go, uh, go over, but, uh, probably should have finance anyway, budget and finance. Anybody else have anything you need to meet for policy? All right, those will be the two.
Well, do we maybe want to do something for community come budget season? How are we going to get that out?
Sure.
Well, we certainly can, but again, our next meeting is preceded by, I always get it on the forum or the.
It's the forum.
The forum.
Who's on the finance subcommittee with you?
Mike.
Mike. Yes. I feel like, yes, sorry.
So for the forum, the last few times we've done it in the gym, um, but I don't know, do we, do we think we'll get that many people? Do we want to do?
We did it in the cafeteria last year.
I'm going to start the cafeteria.
Um, we can certainly set it up there. I think we could also set this up a little bit differently. I don't think even when we've done it in the cafeteria, we've had more than the number of seats we have.
I wonder if we could put us in a row there and have the people there and then have it projected behind us maybe or something? And then do we want to do some light refreshments from chart wells?
Sure.
Like we've done, at least some water or something. Anyway. So we'll do it in here then?
Yep.
All right, great. Anything else? Just a reminder again, um, interest in school committee to run for school committee, last day to pull papers is Thursday, the 28th. And then they have to be back in fairly short turnaround time. Um, but you have to go out and get signatures and stuff, but please, we need some people. Um, if there's nothing else, um, I'll take, we'll vote to enter into executive session. Uh, is there anything else? I just kept right on talking. Sorry about that. We're going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee, the committee will not return to open session.
Mr. Drow?
Aye.
Ms. Pellis here.
Aye.
Ms. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Bartlett?
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.